Meeting to order, reminder to silence or turn off electronic devices as to not distract us during our meeting. And I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The adoption of our minutes from our previous session, I'll entertain a motion to adopt those minutes.
I'll make them.
Remember, thank you, a second please. David, a second, thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then I'll just carry it. Correspondents, I do have a couple of things here. I have from the Tana Mount Oak Supervisor and the Council of People, a notice regarding publicizing of the planning board meetings via the website. We'll discuss that later in our reports from our professional section. Also, I have from the Greenville, Planning Board, Tana Greenville, notice of a public hearing on a subdivision which borders our town. It will be held October 1st at 7:00 PM in Greenville at the Town Building. And the Equity Estates is the subdivider on that project. So we have that information if anybody's interested in attending. I don't believe the subdivision is in our town, but it looks at the map, it looks like it's holding in the Greenville area, but we have a sliver of town property in that. So we're going to fight there. That would be it. Thank you. Okay, our first item tonight will be the Dillon property, two lot subdivision.
So you guys saw this last month. Since the month has gone by, we have done perpulation testing, had it witnessed by Jason's office. So that's about all that we've gotten back or done with it, really. We do have a full set of plans in front of you. I know Jason's made a few comments. And I don't really have any issues with any of the comments other than number five. We do have a complete set of plans in front of you. And perpulation and soils testing, yep, was witnessed. So basically, we're here to look to move forward, possibly schedule a public hearing if the board's ready for that.
Jason, do you have information for which that is?
Yeah, Scott mentioned, we've done the perks and we're actually a little better than what was represented on the plan. It's only a two lot subdivision and generally all conforming, so we only have pretty minor comments on things. So I think if the board is inclined, they can go ahead and schedule a public hearing for the project.
Okay. Any questions, legislature, for the members?
The only thing was the runaway. The easement, right? Yeah, I will provide, I will make sure that for the public hearing that you guys get the deed. The survey was prepared by Mr. Dillon and we do, we do show a note here about the easement. So I'll see if I can clarify that. It's, it's basically, I believe the note says 12 foot wide runaway. And it basically goes to Kyle's property in the back, so. But I'll see if I can provide the deed and get that cleared up a little bit more for the board.
Yeah, that will have to be included, I think, on the map too, as well as having those.
Yeah, it is, it is now. We'll just see if we can clarify that a little bit better for everybody.
Anything else? If we're good, we'll set a public hearing for next month. Look, give us enough days. That would be October 16th. Honors, Newt, 2:7 PM for the public hearing. We need the motion for that, David?
Yes.
Okay. entertain a motion to set public hearing for October 16th.
I'll make it.
May I, may I thank you a second? Second. Thank you. Did you get that a little bit? John, okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's carried.
Thank you very much.
See you again next month. See you again right now. Charkin four lot?
Yes. So this is the first time the board's seen this. This is over on Choddy Hollow Road. We're, we basically have a 21 acre, 22 acre parcel. We're proposing a subdivision of five lots. Lots are basically ranging in size from slightly over one acre to two acres. We've done preliminary soils testing. We're going to try to get Jason's office out there in the next couple of weeks to witness soils testing on this site. The remaining lot with the old house on it where Juliette Charkin lives is lot number five. That's a 15.5 acre parcel. She basically uses it for her horse. She has two horses on the site, so it's a little format. The family's been living there for probably 50 years now. She's getting close to retirement, so she's looking to subdivide a few lots. These lots will all new for residential homes. The soils testing was pretty good. Basically, perks range from anywhere from five minutes to 20 minutes. Speed limit on the road, I believe, is 35 miles an hour. So it's not, it's not a road that you could travel down very fast. We have positioned the driveways opposite of these existing drives. We plan on doing some, next time you guys see the plan, I'll have some, some clearing notes on it, some easements for clearing possibly. And I will, I do have a site distance chart. I'm going to expand that chart a little bit to include possibly site distance with clearing. But I think I make it on most everything right now. That's basically it in a nutshell. So we'd like to get back in front of the board next month. I'll be looking to submit another set of plans with a lot more detail and quite a few more pages. That's it.
More questions? Gene?
I'm good.
I think the design and layout meets all our approvals. Do we need to discuss the, well, maybe that's in your notes, so we'll let Jason bring us up to speed with what he has and we'll see if there are. Conservation subdivision.
Sure. This is proposed as a conventional subdivision, so the board wished they could require Scott to do a conservation subdivision, but as it is, it complies with all of the zoning. It's a by lot subdivision, so per the towns regulations, it'll be considered a major subdivision, so there will be parkland fees as part of this. As Scott noted, he's placed the driveways as best he can to increase the site distances. He's done some preliminary perk tests out there. Those look pretty good. The parent parcel, what's the remaining size of the parent parcel?
The remaining size of the parent parcel will be 15.5, 15.6 acres.
Yeah, it'll have frontage in two spots on Choddy Hollow, but the other area is very steep, so I don't believe there'll be any access from that area. Won't be accessible from there, but it will have frontage on both of the sides. So it'll be very similar to local, which you've just seen in terms of configuration and scope.
Okay. So we need to discuss, if the board are making motion whether to require or not the conservation subdivision. I'm reading that it's proposed as a standard, you're not looking to do a conservation subdivision?
No, sir.
Okay. So entertain a motion that we will not require conservation subdivision to be placed upon this project. Motion, please. I'll make it. Jeff, thank you, a second?
I'll second.
May I, may I thank you, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. This is it?
Yeah, for tonight, I think I'd say we'll do soil testing.
Okay. Yeah, continue with the commented items, your callers.
Okay.
If we could go back to Dillon for one moment. We had mentioned GML 239, that went out last month, Linda?
Yeah, I'm going to get it back.
No responses back, okay.
And no response from County DPW, too.
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Crack the whip. Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, thank you so much, boy. Have a nice night.
Data, data, data. It's possible to get that. It's good to see you. You may have a good time, yeah.
Probably been a good half a year.
Yeah, probably at least that.
All right. All right, good evening to the board again. It's John Fuller, it's good to be before you again. We've been working this application for quite some time. Originally, we had an art prior format for the application, was proposing a 24 lot subdivision coming off of the existing extension of Cedar Lane with a connecting road out to Guymark, County Road. Done a lot of engineering prior to this. We had gotten approval from the county for the road entrance. And we spent a lot of time looking at the potential for the 24 lots to tie into Hidden Valley sewer as well as the water systems. Through a lot of investigation over a long period of time, determination was made that currently, as the facilities sit in Hidden Valley, that they would not be able to provide water and sewer connections without significant upgrades to the 24 lots. So at that time, we looked at going back to a more conventional well and septic subdivision. And so through the course of the last half year and some consultation with the Health Department, we came up with a configuration that meets all development standards for the lots, but still with a connecting road that comes off the Cedar Lane out to Guymark Turnpike. But each individual lot would meet the minimum standard for the zone in a conventional format, but would have a well and septic to support the lot and will try and to connect into the utility services of Hidden Valley. And so what I wanted to do is come and present our configuration tonight prior to proceeding with a lot of extensive engineering. I do know, and I briefly reviewed Jason's memo, there is the consideration of a potential for conservation, although I think it doesn't really work in here. We discussed the circumstances as such. But we did a lot of updates with it, and this is the current layout that we would like to propose. So each one would be a single family dwelling on each one of these proposed parcels. They range in size from about 1.4 acres or just under an acre and a half up to several acres based on what we have. So I wanted to present that tonight and get any initial feedback before we proceed with further engineering on this subdivision.
Jason, do you have your comments for it and your initial review?
Yeah, I think John covered most of the things. It's kind of good data reimagined without the water and sewer here. Those two spur roads that were originally located in the subdivision are removed as part of the consolidation. It does comply with all the codes. It'll have to go to Orange County Health Department for well and septic approval and for realty subdivision approval. It'll be a realty subdivision and a major subdivision for the town's requirements. Kind of obligated to mention the cluster subdivision, but I tend to agree with John, that it doesn't lend itself to that. Wet areas and generally the idea with the conservation subdivision is that you're preserving some areas that are of particular importance to the town. There's a chunk of this that's wetlands, there's the power easement, so I don't think it really lends itself to that either.
Questions?
That said, I think this is just the initial presentation of the new configuration.
For members?
I have an issue, of course, with the lots being under the Marcy South power lines. From my own opinion, I would not ever have my children buy a home in such close proximity to the power lines. So good planning for me is to not to say to my neighbors, this is a good plan and you should possibly buy this lot or your home under these power lines. It doesn't work for me at all.
How would you access lot five?
So lot four, lot five, I don't, I don't have it shown on this format. This is quite a large parcel, so the house would sit at the setback and then we would have the septic to the rear of the lot. So in a future iteration, I will show you. I believe it was included in what we, on the second page.
It's not going off Homestead Land.
No, no, no. No, all, all these lots would have access and frontage directly onto the proposed extension of Cedar Lane that was shown. Yeah, they would all have access. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't put it on the map, but if you go here, maybe I apologize. All right, this is lot five, so the house will sit up here. So that's lot five, I apologize.
And move that here. Move that far?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're going to propose for the subdivision. I mean, certainly if an owner wanted to move the house further back at a later time, you know, they could always come back to the planning board for relocation of the house.
SDASL with the mudlands and everything there?
Yeah, we've gone through all that. All the wetlands have been updated. We have the proper separations, which is a minimum 100 feet from any water body or wetland, and so that's been for us.
Anyone else?
I think the town should address the health concerns of the, of the possible fires down the road for these properties. I know there's no rules or regulations regarding it right now, but for me, it's an issue.
I would have to echo Gene's concerns as well, personally. So I feel that way about it.
You're not proposing the structures being under?
No, we can't, so.
Under the power lines?
Yeah, so the power company has an easement and we wish any tower and/or their lines traverse that easement. We cannot build, in fact, you know, the roadway will have, will need their approval to traverse it, but as you're aware, there are many roadways that traverse under power lines throughout not only Mount Hope, but everywhere. So that, that's just the right of way through the easement. But there's no dwelling that will be, and I'll get proper separation distances and note them accordingly on future maps, just to give comfort to the board. Will provide whatever studies are necessary relative to placing homes within proximity to power lines. There are examples even within Mount Hope among other adjoining municipalities where where homes are in close proximity to power lines. It's a common occurrence. I recognize the concern, but it's not a limiting factor. There's nothing that, there's no code or regulation that prohibits us from doing over different.
I have a question.
Yes.
Water runoff, because I know that Hidden Valley has issues with their water runoff several times at different meetings. How are you proposing to deal with the water runoff from building and then from rains that would happen even after the buildings are, even after, if the divisions are, even after buildings are put up?
There's proposed stormwater infrastructure within the subdivision that will control all the water. The topography, and you know, I'm sure we'll go through this and it'll be reviewed accordingly. All the topography for the site remains so that water runs off within the site. It doesn't actually enter the streets of, you know, the Hidden Valley subdivision. So we won't be releasing water into the Hidden Valley subdivision, which is a concern actually.
Okay.
The board?
The wetlands are federal or steam?
They're all federal.
Well, I was just kind of curious, for lot five, where do you have your proposed sewer disposal? As far as how far away from the dwelling? Is that because of the wetland?
Yeah, we have to get a minimum separation distance from the wetlands as well as adjoining wells and septics, and so we put that. I mean, we certainly could move the house back here initially, place the house in the location of minimal disturbance, but that's the reason why. But it is downgrade, it's almost 15 feet downgrade of the house, so giving gravity to this.
It's all gravity, yes.
Yeah, yeah. In fact, all the systems except for one are all gravity fed. So it's all, that certainly is gravity off here. And you can, you can do lines.
But that's due to setbacks from the wetlands.
Yes, that's to maintain a minimum distance from the wetlands.
All your sewer is gravity fed? Is that what you said?
All the septics are predominantly gravity fed, yes. Yeah, except for one, there will be one pump. Okay? And all, all septics and wells would be reviewed by the Health Department at the appropriate time.
What kind of soils in there?
They're pretty decent, that we call marden soil. We've done test pits and selected perks in order to make sure that we can demonstrate over shelter.
I think the reality is the things that were brought up, but overall, something we're looking forward with.
Okay. Do we have any action on the conservation or?
They don't necessarily need to tonight. It may be worthwhile seeing an updated plan with the inherent emergency. They can have it in the back of their minds. If they're comfortable taking that action tonight, they certainly will.
Ready for it tonight? Conservation subdivision waiver, or do you want to wait? Wait. Remind us at the next meeting, John?
I'm sorry, was that?
Remind us at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Levi Browdy, I'm representing Dragon Springs today. I wasn't here for the last meeting. I understand you guys covered some ground in terms of legality, provided that the right zoning and premises is accounted for.
Excuse me, could you speak up a little bit, will you?
Sure.
If you can hear you.
Face this way, too?
That's good, thank you.
I'm Levi Browdy, representing Dragon Springs today. So I understand from the last meetings, we covered legality, we covered the impact on the roads, and we had submitted answers for Jason's set of questions, and I got burned hard tonight, so I'll go back and talk on that. If I understand tonight, the main question here is, is the temporary nature of the plant? Or whatever other questions you guys have, how to answer those?
I think there, there's still concern about whether or not it fits in the zoning. It's my understanding that this is in the RP2 zone, which is a resource protection district, within which just about all of the use is agricultural or residential. I don't see that a temporary concrete plant fits into that zoning. It would be my opinion that this would have to go to the ZBA for use areas if it were to move forward.
My apologies, Mr. Chairman. Was this discussed last meeting?
You have to speak up or get a microphone, please. Would you choose?
There is a time that the public can speak and a time that the public can't. Right now, he's addressing the board. He's not addressing the public.
Oh, excuse me.
Public should be able to hear.
And you will be.
We should be able to hear what is going on so that when we have the opportunity, we can comment. If we don't hear what he's saying, that's.
Sure, he's turned, so let's, let him proceed.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll, we'll be able to hear you.
So just to repeat my question again, I apologize I was not here. The zoning was not discussed?
I don't believe there was a final determination.
There wasn't a final determination.
And, and the determination I just stated was also made, and I discussed it with Mr. Plotsky also today, who was at the last meeting.
Okay.
But that, that is both of our opinions.
Okay, okay. So we might be looking at if we want to move forward or variance?
Yes, for use variants.
Okay, understood.
And it's noted in our memo too, that if you do proceed, I think just in terms of the height that you're proposing, so the use variance would be for the use obviously, but I think that you should go ahead and seek an area variance for the heights, and I think the use variance is the, the larger hurdle, and you might as well get that as well.
Sure. Now, do you think the, the silo exception doesn't apply to us?
I think there is an exception, but I still think it exceeds that.
I see. Okay, I, I was in the impression that we're under the, with the silo exception, but I'll double check that, and maybe it's just for good measure, we have to go to zoning anyway.
Yeah, that's what I.
Okay, got it.
I think also some of that may, with the silo, I think it's more in reference to agriculture, like I think at a big new harvest stores, that's not a aggregate for a concrete installation. And to answer your question, I know there wasn't a discussion on the zoning previously. We were more concerned with some definitions as to temporary and, you know, specific usages. And that, that's what we were, so there wasn't any, in fact, we, I think Glenn had asked for some time to do some research to try to come up with some answers on his own.
Regarding the zoning?
That, and we had some of the questions as to what we would interpret as temporary versus what others may interpret. But in, in any event, that, you know, to try to answer you, I'm hanging tonight.
Okay, and stop me if this was already settled last meeting, and I think one of the things that I understand about this plant is that it's exclusively used for building projects, products that will be on the Dragon Springs site. So it is not to, to use anywhere else, except within the boundary of Dragon Springs, and the transportation from the finished concrete off to where it's going to be forwarded, what have you, is all going to be internal roads with our own trucks. So that's for sure, if there was questions about that. That leans into sort of the temporary nature of it. When we're done with the lion's share of the development, we're going to do on site, there's no need for a concrete plant. It's an eyesore, if there's anything else, we wouldn't want it. That's what defines it, in our minds, the temporary nature of it.
Thank you. Anything else, Jason, or?
Um, no, just that if you are to proceed and move forward to the, to the ZBA, then ultimately for this board, if it's deemed a temporary use, I think just like any of the solar applications that come before the horn, we would look to have some kind of decommissioning bond in place and a plan to remove the facility, just in case it was abandoned like any of the, you know, potentially could happen with some of those large scale solar arrays that include that, particularly on a separate parcel.
Okay.
And there's some, you know, you had given a list of projects, but some of them had some specific dimensions, but if you could translate that into cubic yards, I think that would help the, the board understand the usage of things, like you mentioned 6,000 feet of road. It's pretty easy to come up with the, the yardage of concrete that would require, and same thing with the retaining walls, et cetera, just to give a little bit more detail, since it's fairly easy to do that.
Well, yeah, on that list, that's the stuff that we know for sure, and that's why we can quantify it for you. I think what makes it a little bit tough to quantify is we do have some potential building projects that of course needs to go before the town of Deer Park, because some of Deer Park's out of our property. And we wouldn't sort of know what the dimensions of that till we have those plans specked out, and of course, we can't do anything unless those get approved in Deer Park.
Understood. I, I think what I'm mentioning are the ones that are, you do have dimensions for it to provide the, the yardage for it, so that translates into how much material you need. So if you have 6,000 feet of road, you know exactly how many yards of concrete that is equates.
I see. Do that math for you, give me, give me the yardage.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, you, you gave the length of the road, but I'm assuming you know the, the width and thickness of the surface, right? So then you could come up with the yardage. Same thing with the walls, retaining walls.
Okay, yeah, for those, that, that's easy. We can do that for you. Okay, Mr. Chairman, what is, what's the next step this is for us? Do you want us to plan?
This board could vote on a referral to the ZBA for a use variance and an area variance potential.
I'll indicate a motion to refer this applicant to CBA for their considerations of the use variance and area variance. Motion, please. Second.
Where?
A little second. Those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Mr. Kerry, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So you have to get the application process started with the ZBA.
Okay, we'll be drawing on that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
This has been covered, but I'm going to just read what I wrote. My name is Angel Mariziel. I have resided in Otisville, New York, within the town of Mount Hope, New York, for over 50 years. My thoughts and questions about this proposed temporary cement plant. What is temporary? Until they file for renewal, I was told. I don't know much about concrete, but I feel whatever it's used for is close to permanent. The need for a plant on a large property should be followed by a why. A warehouse, a arena, a large parking area, sidewalks, roads, some sort of shelter for humans or animals. Whatever its use should be stated before any approval is given. The need and purpose of this plant should be clearly stated because it's producing a product for other unknown uses. If no answer or only a vague, nonspecific answer is given, then a request for a temporary concrete plant should be denied, also included in a possible approval. It should be agreed upon and understood that a building of any sort is going to be done. It requires prior approval of the planning board, zoning board, and building inspector. This is as it would be with any property owner, larger, small land, and any religious group or nonprofit owner. The assumption that the plant will be used for producing something on the property was determined at the last meeting. I believe it was stated by this board that it was time consuming and not cost effective for them to order concrete from an outside source. No proposed use stated. In addition, I believe that in the past, the owners of Dragon Springs have been found to have built on the property without any previous application to any board or inspector in the town of Mount Hope, only after the fact, and with notice, that they must follow the law, that I'm told they have begun this process to avoid legal consequences. There are loopholes galore. If you wish to find them, attempt to use them. Will this benefit our rural community? A temporary building must be taken down and materials disposed of where and when? Will the concrete be sold outside the property? We have local businesses that sell concrete. They're sold outside. There is a sold outside, then it becomes a business. What about the environment, depending on the use of this plant, traffic, water, sewer, et cetera? I'm sorry if some of my words and my opinion may be incorrect. That's why this meeting should be well attended and questions asked and answers clearly stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just be a topic other than Dragon Springs.
Yeah, it's about good data. They're out there, right?
Well, they're not present here to hear what you have to say.
Okay. Well, I got a question. Did the gentleman say that the traffic study was done on Guymar? Had he got approved for that? I thought I heard him say that.
He said he had a, he had preliminary discussions with the county and the location of the entrance had been reviewed by the county.
Correct. That was the roadway.
Well, can I just make a statement about that, just so you know? But when you come off Finchville and you're looking up over that hill that, by the horse farm where the track was, you can barely see the cars coming as it is now. And if that's where the entrance is going to be, it's going to be pretty hectic over there, looking to see if somebody's coming out or, and trying to look for the other car coming down.
Well, just, just to assure you that part of the review and process of the planning board is to take such things as added to consideration. That is an integral part of the review process. The county being involved with the driveways or roadways will also have their input as to what is appropriate for site distance, speed limits, and items as that. So that if the project does move forward, will be addressed in the, in the process of them moving forward. Is there anything I may have left out, Jason?
No, just simply that it's a county regulated roadway and they'll require adequate site distance and a number of other items before the application can be approved.
I just got one more question if you don't mind. So on Heather Lane, there, right now is an abundance of water that feeds off that property into at least several neighbors' properties, where over the years, they actually have to create swallows to get the water out of their backyard. Even if you go down Cedar Lane, I've walked those roads when, when it's raining and everything else, there's at least an inch and a half, two inches of water on top of the roadway. Is he putting in a basin or a retention pond? I didn't, I'm asking because I couldn't see the drawing of the plan. Is that something that's on the plan that he's gonna look into?
I would say that's something that's going to have to be considered as part of the approval. So essentially, because they reconfigured it to reduce the number of lots, they're basically starting from the beginning all over again. So any of the stormwater runoff, any water issues that may come up have to be presented and put on the plan in a way that's acceptable to the town engineer. So it will be reviewed. It's just with the new configuration, that change hasn't been reviewed yet.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'm further along in that, in the planning and building process, that project can't move forward if it's going to increase water flow onto an adjacent property. So that will be addressed. Mr. Fuller did mention their plans are for all the water that would be on that site for that project, being kept on that project site and not being influenced into any other properties other than what's there.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just patient?
Yes, I'll come forward. I have a couple of questions because I couldn't get, I couldn't hear things too clearly. My name is Grace Woodard. I live at Guymar Lake, right off of Guymar Turnpike. On the question of the first subdivision that had, I think, a property that had 15 acres, that, that part of the property was not to be subdivided. Is that correct with the, the older house?
Yeah, that wasn't the, Charkin, if you're referring to?
I believe so.
Second one, Shady Hollow Road?
Yeah, sure.
They, he did mention that the main parcel was retaining, the main house, existing house was retaining 15 plus or minus acres.
Okay. And it, as I haven't seen the maps, it are, is the subdivision to be adjacent to it or surround it or it's, but it, what is the configuration?
Don't be adjacent to.
Okay.
More or less stacked, if you would, on the road frontage that, that property encompasses.
Okay, all right. What that brings up to me is everybody doesn't make full, full plans when they're selling property. So my concerns, and it also relates to Dragon Springs, which we're not going to speak about, but the potential of, I know, I know, but to the potential of segmentation. And so that you have, you do a review of land and subdivision, and then two years later, adjacent to it, there is more subdivision. So that it then becomes an issue, what is the totality of the impact of the, of the total subdivision on the land? This is a big, it becomes.
We control future adjoining properties and what they may or may not do. We don't have control over that. So I, I'm not sure what segmentation. Well, creeping subdivision, which I, would be to me the closest, which yes, there's rules and regulations.
I didn't know that term, creeping subdivision, okay.
You can't come in with 30 acres today and say, I want two, two lots, and then in two years, two lots, two years, two lots, because that, you're circumventing the zoning process, and that's not allowable. But the lots, as they're configured, the four of them, I don't believe allow themselves subdivision. In a way, the larger one is probably the same way because the frontage wouldn't allow for future subdivision as it's dual frontages, but the one as we discussed here was too steep to have access to. So yes, there's frontage, but is it usable?
Yes.
No. So.
All right. Well, so that's.
I don't foresee that on that, that parcel being done.
No, I, I looked at that when it first came in and ruled it out based on the steepness of the other approach. And also, as Wayne has mentioned, the board is aware of the concept of a creeping subdivision and wouldn't allow it to come back before the board within the time period that is not permitted.
Okay, good. Because this, what you're having, I won't speak about Dragon Springs, but it involves two different towns, obviously. And Dragon Springs is the poster child of segmentation. So if all things that are proved here that could have an impact on another town, I don't know how those are looked at by boards, adjoining boards as to, so I don't have any, I, I don't, I don't know the questions fully on that.
I can assure you that when we have a project that involves another municipality, be it a town, a village, a state roadway, there's a process that we have to notify those municipalities of pending actions here at this board. So anything to come before us that were to proceed, the town of Deer Park, if they were to join a party, would be duly noticed. As I first said off the top of my communications, we received notice from the town of Greenville regarding a two lot subdivision and a public hearing for that subdivision, albeit the piece is minimal that is Mount Hope property, but we're adjoining to it. The subdivision isn't in Mount Hope, it's in Greenville, and there's quite a separation difference, distance from the proposed subdivision and its development to the Mount Hope property, which, you know, it's kind of a non-factor for us, but that rule is there for us to be advised. So if there was something we were concerned with, we would have the right to be heard by that board and the applicant.
And that there's a mutuality of information going back and forth with concerns, historic concerns.
Whatever they may be.
Whatever, whatever they may be.
Yes.
Okay. And they can also present their, they can also present their recommendation for actions.
Correct.
For or against actions. Okay, fine, great. So that's all to the board for the time being. The other, down, I know John Fuller's very thorough, down in Hidden Valley, and I know the flooding, all the water issues. And there are many, many kinds of wetlands. Some are just for two days or two weeks during the year, and then they're very eruptive and some are like burnable pools. So the consideration with wetlands with, years ago, I came to, years ago, Mount Hope, and you could fill in wetlands. And we now know that wetlands are some of the most productive things that we have on earth and really need to be protected. I wanted to say, I thought the concern for power lines is well founded, clearly, and water runoff. And one aspect of water runoff is this whole region, the East Coast is all now known in water circles, freshwater research circles of the saltification belt because of chlorides. It's not simply coming off of road salts, but they've been very slow and accumulating inch by inch, little by little by little in soils.
May I ask you to agree to get to?
Okay. So my point is that that is a well founded concern of water, water runoff, the nature of, the nature of the runoff. And that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's also a grant in our planning process, the water runoffs, there's SWIP with DEC. They're very active in presenting us guidelines that have to be followed. The engineers are aware of it, and we do see that they follow what the recommendations are and I'm sure they're concerned. Those are things that you mentioned that don't concern us, and that's above our pace grade here, so to speak, but that the DEC is, you know, when they make their recommendations, they're considering all those.
For the public to know about, the salt chloride issues are massive. They're increasing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
More public comment? Yes?
Should I go there?
If you'd like, it'd be fine. Your name, please, for the record?
My name is Mela. I'm from Mount Hope Chinese Association. I know some of you. And I have lived in Mount Hope for quite a while. I just have some comments because as a part of the Asian community, and I'm not from Dragon Springs, I'm related to Dragon Springs. My husband works there. So I just wanted here to say that I'm grateful that I'm here. I say that for my community also. And we, that's why Mount Hope Chinese Association is going to hold a seminar. That would be October the 24th. We invite the public with your questions to, the seminar would be Dragon Springs Community Seminar. And in terms of Mount Hope Chinese Association, we have all kinds of people, including people who don't practice fangon, like our English teacher, who's been helping us, he doesn't practice. But we want to facilitate the communication. I'm also pleading the board and also the public, when we view any sense coming to you or coming to your neighborhood or years, please remain, like, like if you were to judge this and without any information originated from the Chinese government, if it's really your neighbor, how would you view this? I just plead that kind of justice, that's all. Because it's been a lot of misinformation, including from New York Times, it's been utilized, weaponized by the CCP. I mean, we really very grateful, once again, thank you all, and I hope you all, whoever is interested, can come to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with a public comment? Harry Dunn will move on. Reports from engineer, attorney.
Glenn is on the mend. We expect him to be hopefully back in the office next week part-time.
Good.
But he's getting there, so.
And I do have one item. In receipt of a letter this evening from the town board, Town of Mount Hope, from the council persons there, and the supervisor requesting that we consider the publishing of our zoning board meetings on the Town of Mount Hope website. So that's something I believe we should discuss as a board. We've done that in the past and take a determination. So if you'd like to take that over, take it home with you for a month, and we'll hit it again next month and come up with a consensus as to what way we'd like to go and then advise the.
They should all be in the letter.
Town board. Anybody receive a letter?
They will be.
Okay. All right, well, I just tipped you off. Food for thought, and we'll, we'll discuss that next month at the meeting. So please, all attend next month?
What did you say, publishing, talking about videoing?
I don't know, Paul, but what?
Yes, videoing of the meetings and putting them on the town website along with the town board meetings.
It wouldn't be live. It would be recorded, then it would be put out there.
Correct. It'd be the same setup as the town board meetings. It would either be the next morning or the next afternoon. It would be put up on the town's website.
How long do they appear for the public to view?
I think they stay on there for.
Oh, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know about forever. I'm not sure.
I don't know.
Well, they stay on there, they stay on there for the whole year at least, but I think they even go further. Amanda, do you know? Yeah, they go further.
There's the man in charge. We get royalties for that?
Tell them part of yourself.
Okay, yeah, yeah. That's a few big bunnies on you.
And just so, you know, we've gotten a lot of requests from members of the public that ask us why the zoning and the planning boards don't put their meetings on as we do. And that's why we had a discussion at our meeting, and we voted to ask you guys and the zoning board to, to do that. And we'll help with the logistics of it. So there's really not much for you guys to do other than approve.
This came up a year or so ago, didn't it?
Few years back. They chatted the most, and that joke, so was mentioned to us. We'll discuss it at between now and the next meeting and advise you accordingly.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. I think that brings us through our regular agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Mary Beth, thank you. A second?
I'll second it.
Gee, thank you. Those in favor? All right. We know it's not opposed. Thank you all.